Chairman.
Hey, welcome everyone in the audience and those on YouTube. Today is Monday, March 11th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To everyone, we all had a chance to see the agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Who's in second in all favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Rita, come on up. The next agenda item is an action item. This is claims, board orders, and...
Oh, shoot.
I didn't see a junior college.
No junior college.
And I kind of, Doug kind of answered my question this morning on the expenses for... I forgot the guy's name. It's our, I guess, Capital One murder case.
There were several bills pertaining to that.
Those are pretty good bills. And I'm sure we're just getting started there. So you guys chime in with your questions whenever you...
So in regards to that, are we applying for reimbursement from A C E?
Commissioners, we are waiting on the prosecuting attorney to determine the route that they're going to be taking with that case before we have the ability to apply through the Capitol Defense Capitol Defense Fund for any type of reimbursement.
Nice. See, you have to hit so much cost before you... Well, Brian's here, he can tell us.
I wish I could.
Commissioners, we have to, if we are... A lot of things have to... A lot of things are determined if the prosecuting attorney does in fact file notice of intent, then we do have the ability to apply for reimbursement through the Capitol Defense Fund. We, the county is on the hook for anything, for $10,000, and then we would be eligible for any type of reimbursement after that. That's where we're at.
Those funds are going to be gone shortly here, so...
Doug, you're taking that out of general fund reserve now?
Nope, we're taking it out of the public defense.
Public defense, okay.
Out of conflict defenders.
And we, how much do we have in there, do you know?
$50,000. So it is a good chance that that budget will be going over budget, depending on the status of that case.
Rita, I just had one question on the bills. Coenergy, is that the same as Valleywide propane?
It is not. Coenergy is the state. They carry, they have state contract. I believe Mickey and Jeff spoke with commissioners about changing from Valleywide to Coenergy.
That's just for the fuel.
That's just for fuel.
Commissioners. Oh, so Coenergy is diesel and gas, not propane? That's where I was confused.
Yeah, Valleywide is propane.
Okay. And that's, okay, road bridge. That was just a new one I hadn't seen.
Yeah, I think this is the second month that we've had claims from them.
Okay, if there's no questions or concerns, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims and the board orders. I'll make a motion that we accept the claims and board orders.
Agreed.
Who decided to pay the claims or board of the claims? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
How you doing, Rita? Bad, except I left my glasses in my truck. Well, this is a little blurry, not too bad, but you know. Can't get back far enough anymore.
Boy, everybody's here. That's great, we should have a party.
Doug, do we have Stephanie Nelson on the agenda anytime soon?
I can check, Commissioner Mopkin, I don't.
Just curious on her bills that she put in this time. She had Firewise Training. I probably just need to call her, but she's got wildfire mitigation policy and regulation development. So maybe if she has heard anything from her on that, I'm curious about what she's developing as far as policy and regulation.
Um, we can wait for you.
Sure, yeah.
We'll wait. But you gotta run, I'm gonna see this.
This is my run, buddy. I quit that when I hit sixty.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, that's forty.
Commissioner Mopkin, I do not see that she's on the agenda for April... For that, excuse me, for March. I'm looking at April now, I don't see her scheduled, but we can...
I'll reach out individually then. Oh, do you know, I haven't found an M O U with her, actually.
We just renewed that contract goal last year for fifty an hour, remember that?
Yeah, but I didn't see a scope of work. I mean, she's, if she's developing policy and regulation, there should be some good policy manuals somewhere.
Which my do is ask Doug or somebody to come up with that contract. And I'll try to show you. The issue that you're going to find out is that it does a lot of this at the same meeting. Does that make sense? You know, it's like an agenda item, a similar meeting, but... I would suggest you call her and meet with her. We're gonna wait for Commissioner Thompson to come back and then we will get started.
I was just strategically.
Having baby calves yet?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got sixteen.
Going okay?
Fifteen so far. Our first, first calf heifer calf last night, so here we go with the heifers.
And it's amazing to me after they have their first calf, how skinny those cows are. It's like, wow. Yeah, they look good and then they calve and then they look like they're bones and skin. Here he comes.
I think a few of us females have felt that in our lives.
It's a lot of weight to lose fast. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on and down our agenda, our next agenda item, our elected officials reports. We'll start with our assessor. Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to check with you guys. When we had that workshop, we, Christie had made you a packet with sixty-three dash six oh two B, C, D, E, and G, G codes. Do you guys still all have those available?
I'd have to look, but I think I do.
Well, if you don't have them, it's important that you have them for our one o'clock today.
Maybe you can bring them. I think I have them in here, but I...
A new packet for you guys?
Yeah.
None of you have them?
For the one o'clock?
Uh, one o'clock and then again, maybe at three for whatever, we can't finish.
Okay.
Do you know if she sent them to us electronically or was it paper?
No, she had made paper packets so that you guys would have them.
I don't save anything with paper. Mine all have to be electronic.
Would you rather I email them to you guys?
That would be great for me.
Okay.
But if not, I'll just...
What about...
Paper's fine with me.
Paper, Neil?
And I'll look for mine, see if I can find them. I'm pretty sure they're in here.
Just email, it'll be fine.
Email's fine?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do one paper and two emails, how's that? That's, that's all I have. I just wanted to make sure you guys had everything you needed for later today.
Yeah, those, going through those, those were fairly simple, a lot of those, looking at them. And I'm really just going off your recommendation.
Well, these are some of the easier ones first, just to kind of...
Get used to it.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll see you then.
All right.
Mr. Miller.
Commissioners, good morning again.
Morning, Doug.
Of course, our office has been following legislation very closely. I had to testify last week at the House Senate Affairs Committee regarding a bill that the clerks were in somewhat opposition of, and that was the absentee bill, which was going to potentially be eliminating no excuse absentee applications. But we did work with the representative that submitted that, and we are going to be working with him to provide language that we can be supportive of. So we're, again, as the commissioners probably are, following the legislation very closely right now on several different bills. But one that did spark the interest of the clerk's office, or the clerks association, excuse me, was in regards to the absentee bills. Our dates and deadlines bill, we're potentially going to be letting that not go through this year and potentially next year. There is a possibility that there's a representative that wants to submit some language that we're not really in favor of. So we are kind of taking a step back from that dates and deadlines bill, so it might not be a bill that passes this year. And we'll have to wait until next year for that bill to go forward. We're still working with the outside auditor on the outside audit. I do believe that as Weigartson Associates will be presenting to the commissioners on the twenty-fifth of March for our outside audit that was completed. So we will let you guys know when we get that scheduled.
I want to be here that day, Doug. Do you want to be here out for that?
We can, if, that is a time where I would, do you want all commissioners to be here? So if the commissioners aren't...
That's when I'm gone.
Okay, then we'll reschedule that. Then, Mr. Chairman, we'll probably schedule that for the first week of April or the second week of April. I would like all commissioners to be here for that presentation. And with that, commissioners, I'll answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thanks for going down. Kind of a pain to go do that, but thank you, that's important.
Yeah, it's important.
Is that bill they're trying to do, just trying to make the absentee ballots more selective instead of a way of life?
So the language that we are in support of is in regards to the mass mailing. The representative that submitted it, the language was going to be preventing those mass mailing applications that both parties mail out to constituents and confuses the voters. What we would be in support of is a universal application, either that's available through the Secretary of State's office or the clerk's office that isn't pre-filled out. Again, what was happening is that individuals were getting these mailings that were absentee ballot application that were pre-filled, that weren't coming from the Secretary of State's office and weren't coming from the clerk's office. But currently, that is allowed.
Oh, goodness.
But it was confusing the voters. So in the language of that bill, he was eliminating the ability to do that, and that's what we were in support of. Our concerns in the bill, it was specifying who could apply for an absentee ballot. In the language, it indicated that you have to be out of the jurisdiction or you have to be ill or have a disability, which prevents you from going to the polling location. The concern is who is going to monitor that? So if a constituent or a voter applies for an absentee ballot application but doesn't meet that criteria and that's reported, who is going to be the investigative body to determine in that? The clerks felt that that was, we don't like that if, we don't like that responsibility if it fell on the clerk's office to investigate that. I'm assuming the Attorney General probably doesn't have the time to investigate all those claims. I know the prosecuting attorney's office up here wouldn't have the ability to investigate all those claims. So that language, we were not in support of, which ultimately would eliminate the no excuse absentee ballot process that currently is in place in the state of Idaho. It would set restrictions. We're not in favor of setting restrictions.
Right. So Doug, can I still come in and get an absentee ballot for my ailing mother or father? I can't, still can't do that.
You, you never could.
You have to come in and request it, don't you?
You have to provide us with an absentee ballot application. The individual requesting it has to submit an absentee ballot application to our office, either by mail.
By mail.
Correct.
They can't come in.
Or they can do it online.
And it has to be annual, correct?
Correct.
My mom was asking that.
It's an annual, yeah. Annually, you have to make that request.
Okay, thank you.
On the other question I had on the dates one, so the April fifteenth date, is that not going to get approved this year or everything gets consolidated?
Probably not. There's a good possibility that that's not going to be moving forward.
We won't have a presidential election for four more years. So they're just saying that that was really the reason for the April fifteenth date? Are you talking about presidential and primary?
No, combining all the elections into one, one...
And they think that will go through, but there were some questions with that bill, and since there's four years until the next presidential election, they decided they had time to work on that before that has to go through, so...
I would also like to remind the public that the date for declaration of candidacy is this Friday by five P M. So just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Okay, get your decorations in.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on down the list, Mr. Noggle. Good morning.
Good morning. I mean, not a whole lot to report from the prosecutor's office that you all don't already know. We're very busy on the criminal side. We're gonna be setting, you know, I expect in the next month or two to set two murder cases for trial. So I don't know what the dates for those are going to be. We should be setting one of them this month and then probably the next one in the next month or two, so...
Question, I thought one of them pled guilty.
No.
No, they changed.
No, neither of them have, have, are guilty.
Are there any court hearings this week? I forgot to call in for jury duty. When I just saw you, I went, oh, I forgot to call in for jury duty.
Officers be coming in to get you.
Better get the deputy in here.
What's lunch today?
I mean, either until the end of the day and then come in a restaurant.
Now, we've got district court on Fridays now. The district court switched that day, which is why I'm here today. Normally, we have it on Mondays, but that, that got switched to Fridays. And so that'll be this Friday, we'll have district court. One of those homicide cases will get set for trial. That day at least, I expect it to, and then, and then the other one. If not this month, then next month is, I expect it'll likely be set for trial, but I, you know, I don't know. And we have, you know, our caseload on both felony misdemeanor side is very heavy right now. So Ashley and I are pretty well buried. The civil side, I mean, you guys know what's going on over there. We've got Arnie coming up to speed. He's been helping us out, getting up to speed on mental holds and child protection cases and things like that. So that's been helpful as well.
Question.
Yeah.
So I was at City McCall's meeting on Thursday, and their prosecutor was in just talking about his caseload. So do you guys prosecute within the impact area? Or does he prosecute within the impact area?
I don't know, that depends on their, their agreement with, with their prosecutor. Do you know that answer, Doug?
I'm gonna say that commissioners, Brian, that those cases are in Valley County. They're not within the city limits, so our prosecuting attorney would be handling those cases.
Yeah, and if that's the case, it, you know, it, it's more of a, it's less jurisdictional, like, the cases that I handle aren't necessarily jurisdiction based as, as much as they are law enforcement entity based. So any misdemeanors charged by the City of McCall Police Department are handled by their prosecutor. Any misdemeanors charged, any crimes charged by the Valley County Sheriff's Office, I handle. And then I handle all felonies charged by any law enforcement agency, state, state felonies within the county, whether that's, you know, it doesn't matter who it is, state police, fish and game, you know, it doesn't matter. I handle all the felonies. And then I handle all the misdemeanors that aren't charged by municipal police force, like, like the City of McCall.
But if we had like code enforcement violation in the impact area, that's ours.
Again, it just depends on who cites them. If, if they're cited by a Valley County entity, then yes, it would be ours. And frankly, it would almost have to be, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, the city could do it.
If the city would be able to do that. So if they, if they don't have the authority to cite people for those violations, then... And obviously, their city prosecutor wouldn't be able to handle those.
Well, and it's kind of always been a gray area because you have to remember that city citizens pay county taxes too.
Right.
So you're kind of servicing both sides of that. And whatever you can do to make that the most efficient system is what the goal is.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I handle, I mean, that's why, because where a contract exists to do, to do law enforcement work, such as in the City of Cascade, where the Valley County Sheriff has a contract to do that work, then, you know, that would authorize me to handle those cases as well. I end up just being, you know, our office ends up being part of that contract and handles that stuff under that.
And I think that's something that maybe future boards down the road might want to look at as far as, you know, we have other costs besides sheriff's deputies out there that, on those kind of contracts.
Yeah, I mean, they do, the City of Cascade does pay some money for their, for the prosecution services.
Do they have a city attorney, Brian?
They do.
But he doesn't do any prosecution?
No. No, it's...
Or civil?
Yeah, he handles their, the civil side of things.
Okay, any more questions for Brian? No. Okay, great, good to see you. Sheriff, Mr. Kopery. Good morning.
I'm gonna keep this kind of short, I had a wisdom tooth taken out. My face doesn't feel like talking, so...
Oh, my goodness.
Everything going about the same over at the Sheriff's Office, staffing, everything in the jail's about the same. Swearing in two new jail deputies today. They've been on a week or so, but we'll get them sworn in today. Have actually quite a few applications for patrol as well. And we have enough in background, as long as everything goes well. Like I said last week, we'll be full up in the jail as well, so...
Nice.
That's looking fairly, fairly good. Compared to what we've seen, so...
Yeah. It seems like winter carnival was pretty quiet.
It was fairly quiet, yeah. And only having it one weekend in and out was kind of nice for us as well, so... But yeah, it, it just seems like a lot of things are turning a little more family friendly instead of the party crowded with a lot of families and stuff. And that just doesn't create all the problems that the partyers do.
That's nice. Hey, can you have an action item?
I do, it's the Transportation Office Highway Grant that we do every year. Just reauthorization, I had to wait. The clerk had to help me get some stuff done after an audit. We finally have all that stuff done, so we can send it in. This is, this is for our overtime grants for traffic safety.
And I don't think we got this in our packet. Can you give me a quick rundown, how much money, all that kind of stuff?
It's just, basically, what we do is it, in our budget, there's, there's a grant, and I think it's twenty grand.
Twenty grand's what I thought.
And, and then what, what happens is the state just pays the overtime for the deputies as, as well as mileage for the vehicles. And deputies have to sign up for it. It's just, it's purely overtime, safety grants for DUIs, aggressive driving. It's usually, it's usually around holidays, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day, stuff like that. Your, your hundred deadliest days of summer, there's grants going on most of the time.
Mr. Chairman, it's in, it's in your packet as the I T D grant?
Okay.
The only thing I didn't see is that it ever gone through the prosecuting attorney's office. I don't see a routing sheet with it at all. You guys, is this just a reoccurring one?
Just, yeah, it's just the reoccurring one.
We should probably still get him just to look at it and make sure we're protected.
Okay.
We can go ahead and approve it with, that as part of the motion?
It had stated in here that only certain people can approve the overtime claims. That's what I was questioning, is you're making sure that we're meeting that obligation?
We are, it, yeah. It has to be somebody who is not participating in the grant is the only one that can approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the I T D twenty twenty-four traffic enforcement grant, with the understanding that the Sheriff's Office will put this through prosecuting attorney's office.
One second. And a motion in a second to approve the I T D F Y twenty-four traffic enforcement grant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You have a copy there? Come on up. I know we're signing it, but we do have a process.
This, no, this one, I'm looking at, say, these. Oh, here he is.
I T D.
Yep.
That's it?
Yeah.
Hey, good catch. And then this one too?
No, I just put your signature.
All right, anything else?
I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on down the list. Treasurer, Johanna. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Just a short and sweet update from the treasurer's office this morning. We're continuing to work through tax deed. As I mentioned two weeks ago, those properties went off to the title litigation search, and the title company is still working through those and getting those processed. The next step on our list for tax deed is to send out certified letters to the owners and to everybody who shows up on that title search. And we plan to do that by the second week of April. So we have a bit of a gap here in our to-do while we wait for those title searches to come back. We also process the annual jug handle L I D statements. Those went out at the end of February, and those payments are due by April first. So we're just, you know, working through loose ends. And my office did a few interviews for my chief deputy position last week, and we have a few more this week. We're applying, yes.
Um, have you been following the legislation at, at the State House about, something about tax deed sales? And, and I think it's the same process we're doing now, but I don't know why. Maybe they're just clarifying it?
It is, so the Supreme Court in the United States ruled that government entities could not keep any excess proceeds from properties taken via tax deed. And Idaho has been practicing that for the last, for many, many years. There is, however, they discovered a loophole. And that loophole is that if a property is taken via tax deed, rather than being sold at auction, it could potentially be transferred to another government entity. And in that case, it could be considered like, we're keeping the excess sale or the excess proceeds because we're trading it for, you know, something of equal value or just trading it to another government entity. And in that instance, any proceeds that were beyond the taxes due would not be dispersed to the individual who owned the home. So they're just essentially closing up that loophole. Here in Valley County, we do not practice that. We do not transfer property. So we sell the property and the excess proceeds from the sale go to the individual who owns the property. Or if they're deceased and we can't find any heirs, they get turned over to the state of Idaho's unclaimed property.
And if you can't find heirs for that money, then I think you have to hold it for like ten years until some heirs come up?
We turn it over to the state of Idaho.
They have to hold it.
Handle it, yep. And they hold it indefinitely. There's no wording in the Idaho code to direct them on what to do with that.
Oh, my goodness, so it just sits in limbo.
Well, I know years ago, I think it was in the seventies when they changed the law that the county could keep, take the property and not auction it. And that really wasn't right either.
Right.
So they, they took that ability away as well. It'd been nice to have it in a case or two, but we don't have it, so...
Oh, please have a will?
Yes.
Sign it for yourself, don't give it to the...
This is a P S A for everyone, please have a will.
Have a will, just on the back of a napkin works.
Yes. Speaking of that, we are also continuing to work through the public administration case. I met the company that we are hiring to liquidate the assets for that individual. I met them last Friday out at, out at the site, and they took an inventory. And we're just working through that... I met them last Friday out at out at the site, and they took an inventory and we're just working through that process. I'm so extremely thankful for prosecutor's office and all their guidance and help as we navigate the situation that I've never done before, so it's been great.
And I want to thank Johanna and Sue publicly. We went to the McCall Senior Center last week. Wasn't a lot of conversation, but there was, you know, interest from a couple on the programming that is available to our seniors. And so that was a good conversation, and I want to thank both of you for taking your time to do that.
Yeah, I know that Sue and I both really appreciated that, and we thank you for setting it up. We would love any opportunity we can to get out in front of the public and to put a face to the name. So if you have a question about a tax bill or an assessment notice that you can pick up the phone and you know who to call.
I think it'd be great to do like a high school economics class or something like that, so they understood homeownership, you know, and all that it entails.
Yeah, I actually have been in touch with the government teacher at the McCall High School looking to put together some sort of presentation with the clerk, the assessor, and myself to talk about county government. They just finished their module on state government. I went down and toured the Capitol last week, so it'd be nice to get in there sometime before the end of the year and get a a presentation done.
Absolutely. That'd be great.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
Okay, we're going to move on to the department heads. Annette was not able to make it this morning, so we're going to go to DeeDee. Good morning.
Well, updates. There's a new director in our department.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Or condolences, whichever you want.
Small tidal wave at the moment. As soon as I moved to that position, I think I was here on Tuesday, and I was in the position on Friday. I immediately had lots of contact with the community as well as county on what to do, where to go, how to do it, when to do it. So sure is going to call him out here probably in about a month or two, maybe by summer.
Maybe, maybe.
Yes, I'm excited. So at least for then just the county updates, I know I get some time with you all a little bit later, and I appreciate that. There are no kids in detention. Just in the last couple of weeks, I've received four new JV cases. Those cases are specific to, some of them are at least specific to an incident that is the selling and trafficking of legend drugs, which are prescription medication. And then probably in the last week or so, I've met with prosecutor's office, the county clerk, U of I Extension, HR, Mr. Miller, the clerks of the court and the judge so far just to get information of what they're needing from our office, what they like, what they want changed. Still going to be meeting with the McCall Chief of Police. I'll meet with him next week, perhaps the sheriff today if he's is able to chit chat. He said he heard he has stuff with his wisdom teeth. I'm also going to be meeting with IT today. The next three days was a a training, well, not even a training. It's a partnership that I committed to quite a while ago. It's with the state of Idaho. It's called, they did an audit throughout the Department of Juvenile Corrections called EPICS, which is called the Effective Intervention Programming and Collaboration. They want to do better. And I think I shared with the commissioners a month or two ago, this is the collaboration where I'm the juvenile probation officer with, I'm the only one on the committee that's going to talk about how best to serve juveniles who are being released from custody and into the community, how to make that partnership more transparent, more connected, more effective to better outcomes and to reduce recidivism because that's where the gap is. So I'm really proud to be a part of that. However, in doing so, and with the fact I've taken on a new position, I will be running back and forth from Boise to here this next week. I'm around and I'll be in my office all day Friday. Also, just to, I've just set up a training with some folks in the community on HIPAA. So my department is going to go to a training on HIPAA just to fine tune what is confidentiality, what do we share, what don't we share with our partners? What do our partners share and not share with us? Just to tighten up that, I think for the most part, we practice it pretty good, but there is a there's a fine line as to what can be shared. Who needs to know, who doesn't need to know. So that's going to be in April. And then furthermore, especially when it comes to the confidentiality of juvenile cases. Like this weekend, I got a third party call from the community member that wanted to give me information on a case. I cannot respond. Well, I know that you're the juvenile probation officer in this county, and I appreciate that. However, I cannot admit or deny if I have a juvenile on probation or not on probation. And so also going to just be sharing and continuing to share that training and that information out to our community that any of us probation officers can receive information from anyone at any time. However, it is nothing personal. We're not we're not hiding information. We just can't share or confirm or admit or deny information on a client or perhaps a case that is not open to public record. So it's just something we're going to look at. I think that's the, at least the last week. Updates. Any questions?
Thank you.
Glad to have you, Dee.
Appreciate your energy.
Yeah, some people call that tidal wave, just me in the morning, so I get it. Thank you.
Are you going to try and replace Sue? Are you going to reorganize your office and look at what you're going to need as you move forward or?
Good question. So in all of my discussing with all of the department heads, as well as community folks, as well as I'll be talking with you folks about all the partnerships that I am involved in, once I know for sure what the community, what my partners, what the commissioners want from me, I will be prioritizing. I'm going to meet with my staff. I'm in a staff meeting after all these, and then I'm going to meet with my staff individually to see kind of what they want, where they want to go, what they want to do. And then I'll put it all together and and then see where I'm at. It is likely I'll be opening up the position in a couple of months to be able to get someone in here because then that also affords me, I mean, depending on where they are with their experience. That's going to be a part time job, just training someone. I've already had partners around the state say, DeeDee, whenever you're ready to train that person, reach out to us. We will help because even when I was in Ada County, it took a good two or three years to become proficient in becoming a juvenile probation officer. And I say proficient, meaning just keeping their head above water. Here, we don't have that kind of immersion into that position. So to be able to have them go to other communities, to be able to like go to Ada County and observe court just for two days is going to give them more than this county can do in probably six months. So I'll be looking at what that looks like. Elmore County's reached out, Boise County's reached out, Ada County's reached out, so all within our region.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And you're thinking that's going to come in a month or two?
Probably in a couple of months. I'll say two. Because in one month, as I'm hoping by then I can breathe slowly and be able to have a full understanding where I'm at. And then I'll, I got to make sure I have the time to be able to give that that part time, you know, supervision to whomever we do.
Okay.
A little more coffee.
Well, I actually do decaf because if you add caffeine to this, oh, you'd be out of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day. Hey, Melissa.
I'm going half and half now, DeeDee, for the same reason.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So continuing to launch and plug away at the Master Gardener Program. As I mentioned before, we are doing that hybrid classroom where there's a lot of, I think, feel like we're covering all bases. We have all the content on a learning platform online. We have in-person virtual meetings, like a lunch and learn, and then we have in-person Saturday, so we're face to face. So we're covering the whole gamut of how we can communicate. Because the all the online content is in that learning platform, there's been and this is kind of interesting because I do think extension plays into the digital literacy and trying to onboard people and how to use the computer.
Good.
Or how to go into a Zoom meeting. I feel like during COVID, we really stepped up to the plate in getting people into that virtual sphere. And I feel like I continue to do that today, especially with this Master Gardener class in the new format and that e-learning platform. It it could potentially be a stepping stone for what people know how to use this space. Now you can go and get a bunch of associate degrees or, you know, even your four-year degree because a lot of the programs are using these e-platforms for learning. And so my Master Gardener Program is kind of taking the edge off that learning curve if you did have an idea that you wanted to go back to school and do that remotely. So it's it's nice to be able to teach that. I'm learning it as well. And it's also a sense of overwhelm for some of the master gardeners, and so I'm I'm trying to get them to not drop out. So there's been a little, like, I feel like we've really leaned into the technology. And I'm trying to make that approachable. So it's a different class than I've ever taught before. Ultimately, I think, once we get people there, I do think they'll be good comes out that comes out of it.
Maybe James can help.
Yeah, yeah. I I do have an update on him, so I'll just jump right there. Continuing to introduce him to community organizations. And I'm also investigating if there is an opportunity to have that position, that AmeriCorps position, continue beyond that August term. And so I don't know if that would be him wanting to continue or a new person, but I think that especially with everything going on right now with that digital economy and equity and access with broadband expansion, then it would be great to have that person.
I am looping him into some broadband conversations that are going to be happening this week.
Excellent. Yep. I know there's one that's like attended a date on Friday, so yeah, make sure he's plugged into that. I haven't seen like what date, what time it's going to be been down.
I think we've confirmed it.
We have one more in-person Master Gardener Class and on a Saturday, and I'll be doing our favorite class presenter, which is Steve Anderson. The master gardeners always love hearing from Steve. He is a captivating and wonderful presenter. I don't know if you've ever seen him talk about weeds, but he's wonderful. And so I'm hoping that doesn't snow that day, so he can come in and present to the Master Gardener Group. And then I also have scheduled out the Master Gardener Program a little differently than I normally do, where I've tried to schedule dates throughout the summer to be able to make sure that we're coming together to do that volunteerism and trying to coordinate those volunteer dates with actual events in the community. And so kind of trying to get all the logistics of that ironed out upfront so people can mark it on their calendars because I know in the summer, you know, and historically, like January to May, people wanted to learn, and then May through September, they tune out because it's the summer. And so it's hard to capture that audience in the summer. I'm hoping having it on their calendars will help retain that group.
So Melissa, have you ever done a like a community garden?
So that's where I'm going next. You guys are just on fire right now. This is great. So the Bienvenidos Community Garden, which is behind the annex in McCall. I've spoken with DeeDee. We started that last year. I had a core group of the Springs and Jacob's Manor folks that wanted to garden in that space. We had a bunch of challenges and obstacles that we didn't anticipate, like a like the wall coming down and deer coming in because they were doing a remodel with the police station. So, you know, didn't have that on my radar. But hopefully this year, we will have a fence around that space, and we won't have any issues with deer. But the the number one thing when I met with that group was what do you want? What's your priority in this space? And it was like, we want more beds. And so there's five existing beds. And I officially have a waitlist now because another person from the Springs reached out to me and said, hey, I saw this thing happening back there. I want to know what's going on. And and so I have the Alzars students lined up, which also participated last year, which was wonderful. And they want to come and help build the beds. And so I did share that information with Lindsay and said, this isn't the construction workforce day that we for workforce development that Andrew and I were trying to launch. But it's like a little mini light, like come, you know, get some power tools and build a bed. And so I'm have DeeDee's approval. That's going to be April 27th. Master gardeners will be involved. Alzars will be involved. I'll get risk waivers. And I'm working on trying to identify lumber. And so if anybody has wonky, like redwood or cedar boards, I do want those to be able to build the bed, and I'll be doing some ask letters to some local potentially construction companies that have wonky boards that aren't good for building. They could be great for a raised bed in a garden. Or maybe some of the the local suppliers, construction lumber suppliers, they might have some wonky boards that they would want to donate or discount. And so I'll be trying to.
Yeah, they sell those.
Yeah, they do sell them for that purpose, right?
On a job, and it's like, no, you can't send that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not going to work for building.
Yeah, exactly.
Structures.
A straight wall.
Yeah, maybe maybe a garden bed would be okay, but so I'm I'm kind of doing the resource finding for that effort. And then I'm also working with the Pride of the Pantry Plats, which is a community garden that launched 10 years ago. Right when I came onto this position, I was approached by one of the the founding establishments and said, hey, we want to do this. What do we do? And I was like, oh, that's great. I have a lot of experience there. So I was able to help with that group. But I'll be going back into kind of relooking at the leadership and the committee, the committee structure and the leadership, and then a depreciation plan. So kind of like a capital campaign for that garden space. Because at that this point, the fence is falling down. The beds are going to need to be replaced. Irrigation is going to need to get patched up. It's 10 years, 10-year-old infrastructure. So we'll be scrambling to just get one section of the fence fixed up this year, and I have the master gardeners plugged in on their opening day. Master gardener is plugged into that Bienvenidos day. And so lots of moving parts and projects and trying to put them all in the same place to have the biggest impact.
Awesome.
And find the resources too. This Thursday, I'll be doing that webinar with Cultivating Success, Small-Scale Sustainable Ag. And that's focused on how do you find financial resources to be able to get started with your business and all of SBDC promoting what they do as well as Ag West and FSA. Working with the Creative Arts District, working with McCall Arts and Humanities to partner on efforts with the Food Coalition. And I think that's all of my, oh, and then the Horticulture Internship that is posted. It is available. It's on the university webpage. You have to be currently enrolled student. You will get college credit for doing the internship, and you get $17 per hour. So I'd love for that to go to someone that has students that need to come back because then they'll have housing and want to learn more about extension and learn more about community development and involvement and horticulture and community education programs. So that's my plug for that open position right now. Please let it get filled.
Melissa, the only thing I could add to your conversation about the the garden beds is you might check with Scott Klingon to see if there's a possibility to go up to the construction debris pile.
Oh, yeah.
And get, there's a lot of material in that.
Yes.
And then also trex decking works really well for a raised bed because it lasts a long time.
Yeah.
Just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Uh, Human Resources, Mike, come on up. Let's just deal with the tie thing. Are you starting to try a new trend here or?
You know, every now and again, you just gotta make it.
You look very professional.
Thank you very much, yeah. If you can't be professional, at least look professional. Every little bit helps. Obviously, I got a lot going on. We're going to be meeting this afternoon for a few of those situations. Just wanted to give you a quick update. We currently have 159 employees on payroll, which includes 12 seasonals. Our seasonal staff, of course, right now are snow groomers and snow plowers. We expect to probably see about an even swap out with the summertime seasonals that we're recruiting for right now with marine deputy and weed and pest. We are receiving applicants for both of those positions right now. Interviews are taking place already as well for those. Even though we still got a lot of snow on the ground, we got good temperatures coming, so let's hope we see some springtime here finally.
Yay.
Are you getting anyone to apply for the weed?
We have four applicants right now. Steve has three of them that he is looking at closely right now, so.
Awesome.
Very interesting or exciting news about that. We're also starting to receive employee referrals from that referral bonus program. I've already started to receive some. In fact, we had one young man, I think I had three referrals start coming in. I was like, no, 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 no. We first come, first serve on this. And his wife works for us, so I was like, she gets the first referral. You guys want to take her on for a while, so anyway. I'm excited about that program going in place. And then last week, just wanted to give you a real brief update. We did meet with Pat Duncan regarding the continuity of operations plan. That process is moving forward. She's given a few of us some homework assignments to do before our next meeting in April. Thank you, Commissioner Mopin, for attending that meeting as well. But anyway, that's really what I've got going on today and stand for any questions you may have.
Salary issue, we're going to talk later on today.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have no questions. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Mike. Jeremy. You must be feeling better.
I'm feeling quite a bit better, yes.
Good.
You don't look any better.
Oh. Do you want me to hit him or do you want?
She hits me all the time.
I think we mainly went over everything that I'm working on in the meeting last week, so I don't have much, much more. meeting last week, so I don't have much, much more than that. I'm starting to get some equipment for the Wi-Fi stuff for the thermostats, and I'll get with Scott and see who wants to start, so I'm getting that built out.
How far out are we on that?
Once I get all the equipment, hopefully. I'm thinking I won't have to build out the whole thing in order for him to get started. If we, if I, I'll talk to him and see where he wants to start. If we can start getting some coverage in those areas, I can start working on those, then I can just kind of move.
That's just a programming piece that bring all those.
Yeah, I gotta, there's some network switches that I have to configure and put in some racks in the various places around the building. And then that'll be the easy part. The hard part will be, especially on the first floor, figuring out to where to mount the access points and then getting the cable back to one of the switches, because it's all concrete down there and the ceilings are all that those little half-foot by half-foot. Solid tiles, yeah. That'll be a challenge, but we'll figure it out.
So this an app he can just do on his phone to go around and check the different thermostats? Scott can do it.
Yeah, the the end result will be something similar to that, yes. And they can set.
That way he can monitor what's going.
Yeah, and set different temperatures for different, like at night when nobody's here, maybe it automatically sets to a lower temperature for some number of hours and then comes back up like an hour before people start coming into work and kind of warms everything back up, stuff like that.
That's a, that'd be good energy cost savings.
Yeah, and I think idle power goes a bunch of money for doing it, because it helps kind of manage those energy costs.
And I think that's something that we need to think about for the community center as well. Is some thermos, controllable thermostats up there, because that power bill's almost thirteen hundred a month now. So we need to look at turning the heat down at night and that kind of stuff. My question to you is, I appreciate your response when I sent you that phishing email, because I'm getting a lot. And it's like, man, they're really, there's some weird stuff going on.
The phishing emails are still ninety, above ninety percent of the the way that threat actors get into networks. So unfortunately, as much as I wish I could do something about it, there, those people are just always just sending.
Well, I guess why I'm just telling everybody, employees included, be careful what you open up. Because there's a lot of stuff on there right now.
You really got to be careful, because again, it's it's the, it's still the biggest way that people get into networks is by getting somebody to click on one of those things.
So two things, how are you doing on the Lake Fork Wi-Fi? Where are you at on that process?
I got the access point in on Thursday or Friday, I think.
Oh, perfect.
That was out there on Friday. I think I got a pretty good plan of where to put it, so I can get that out there. Probably this week. If I have time, should be no problem.
Great, thank you. And secondly, did you ever set up some classes with iKrim so that we can help train the employees not to open those links?
That was something that I was working on. It's it's kind of fallen off a little bit, but I can for sure put that back on my listing.
Maybe you and Mike can work on that together on, you know, the classes that need to be set up, so. As we were doing, I don't know, I I think we had three to five classes a year that we had to take. All of us had to take them. And it helps on our insurance payments.
I think they did away with that program, I'm sure. I don't know if they do that anymore, but I just still think it's.
Still good to do annual or every six months.
Kind of educate more of our employees about what's out there.
Especially with AI and, you know, one of the things that used to be a little bit easier to spot spam emails is they were using, you know, Google Translator or some sort of other translation program that isn't very good. And so you could see those kind of broken sentences or misspelled words or weird things. With AI, they can make emails that look like a native English speaker, and it's getting being pretty sophisticated out there.
Yeah, the last one I said looked like a valid email, so that was.
You wonder, yeah, I got, hold on here, I gotta show you.
Just forward those to IT support.
And then delete them. And then delete them. Don't keep them on your machine. Hey.
Alright.
Alright.
Glad you're feeling better, buddy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're looking great.
Thank you.
Cindy, speaking of somebody that looks great.
That's right, that's right.
That's right.
So we've just been really busy. We have a number of final plots coming through. Following the the legislation that's associated with planning and zoning, I'm on that legislative committee. Looks like the P and Z, the short-term rental one has been withheld for a while.
I think it's going to go in the drawers, Cindy, for now. I don't think it's going to go anywhere, but.
And I sent you a copy of the letter that I had sent.
And that was a good letter.
Thank you. Planning and zoning commission has a work session Tuesday from three to six. And we have invited Tamarack to come in and update the new P and Z commissioners on how Tamarack works. And on all their pre-approvals, so that we aren't going through such a regimented review. And it's already been approved.
Cindy, if you could put that in kind of a summation page or a white paper and maybe get it to us as well. I don't know if that's more work than you need to do, but because I have questions about what was agreed to way, way in the past. In the PUD and where we are in those steps. You know, the thing that I'm a little confused is the phases, three, A, B, and C, and it's like, I don't remember any of that.
The heritage portion? I can send you the documentation that they've prepared. And then you can actually go listen to their presentation.
We can be there?
No, you can listen to it on YouTube. It's recorded.
Okay, okay.
And that will answer a lot of your questions, than me, you know, regurgitating something that's already done.
And I saw you're going to be discussing all the different plans. What is the purpose behind that?
Is to see what they think fits under the P and Z in anticipation of the meeting we're going to have.
You want to spend time on that before we have the meeting at the EOCC? Some of those plans may not even move forward.
And P and Z will probably agree with you. It's it's just the discussion about the comp plan. I mean, I can tell, I could remove it from the agenda if you don't want us talking about the plans.
I I just think it's a, you know, it's not value time when you guys are so busy anyway. I would move on and actually work on the comp plan until we get a list of priorities.
I'll just remove that.
So you guys are meeting with DQ's Central District Health also?
We met with them March twenty-second of twenty twenty-two.
Dude, that's just a.
Email, I, I listened to it again. It's a good reminder of what.
Okay, that's what this is.
You were part of that meeting. It's, it's, there's a lot of really good information in there, because we are once again getting hit by shouldn't have septic systems within certain distances of our impaired streams and and that type of thing. You know, and well, we say, well, Central District Health and DEQ regulate that. And so I've asked the P and Z Commission to look at that again as a refresher. And the Board of County Commissioners, I believe, should also listen to it, because it tells you exactly what we're in charge of and what they're in charge of.
I love the fact that all this information is out there, you know, and we can just continue to relook at these. You know, the YouTube now is, it's just a tremendous tool. Go back and re-listen and relook at, so.
According to my wife, I watch it too much.
She's trying to tell you something, Neil.
All kinds of stuff. I mean, there, I've learned so much on YouTube. It's amazing.
Google it, yeah. It's all correct, I know.
So I'm attending a Pirate River Scenic Byway meeting Wednesday. Thursday is our regular P and Z Commission meeting. That one is packed. We've actually pushed something in into April. And we'll see how that one goes. Got a meeting on development agreements last week. Elle was in attendance. I think we came to some good conclusions, I believe. Okay, send an email to everybody.
Yeah, that that stuff that he sent is really, especially the case, the Supreme Court case that he presented. If you guys get a chance, you need to read that, because it really sets the boundaries on what you can and can't do. Very educational.
You know, I think the one thing, Cindy, too, we we kind of missed in inviting McCall's Planning and Zoning to our training for the joint training, because they do work on those impact you know, areas. So I mean, if we can do joint training with them too on some of this stuff, it really helps in the impact area. We should probably have invited them to our work session and and think about it.
Probably a good point.
It should be recorded. Clark Miller, is it recorded? The training? We did.
Let's say, a joint meeting?
The joint meeting with the P and Z and the board.
Yes, that was recorded.
You could ask them to.
I would get it. I'll send it, I'll send it to them and I shall have them, you know, review that training.
And then I am attending a public lands meeting with Sherry. March nineteen, I think.
Monday first.
My first.
Is that for WIR or for NICO or?
No, this is the one that is on the IDL lands. And we're gonna, there's a collaborative, there, I think there's fifteen or sixteen people with all different conversations about creating a plan that the community can all agree on. So this is first steps with a lot of different people at the table. There's.
For state land?
For IDL, yeah.
For the use, for the use of state and endowment lands?
So it's going to be a conversation on a conservation plan for those. When I was in DC, I found out that people had been reaching out even to our legislators back there and saying we want to change all this, or we want to exchange all of this with the Forest Service. I mean, personally, I'm not in favor of exchanging all of it with the Forest Service. There needs to be different ideas at the table. And before before we start conversations with the governor's office or with our congressman, we need a coordinated plan. We need to have everybody stop talking about their ideas for plans, because it's just getting confusing for those that may actually help us make decisions as we move forward. So I convened a group to start this conversation. And then eventually it'll come back to us with a full presentation about what this looks like.
Might want to have somebody from the AG's office, because there's a lot of constitutional law that involves endowment lands.
And we've got IDL at the table. We've got the state parks at the table. City of McCall's at the table. I've asked Cindy and Dave and myself, who represents Valley County at the table, so there's going to be a broad conversation. And there is, well, certainly, you know, there's regulations and rules. And we will get to the point where IDL will participate. Oh, I've actually asked Brian Okey to sit at that too. IDL will be able to bring what is, what is constitutional, you know, what they can and cannot do. But there is a lot of things that we can do. And that conversation will will begin for a consolidated plan. What my concern is, we're all having different ideas. Everybody's talking about different things. And the governor's office and our congressional delegation are going, what do you guys want? We're not going to do anything until the county commissioners are on board. And so it'd be great if all of us could participate, but we can't because of the open meeting laws, so we're going to start a conversation, see what what comes from that. And then we'll come back here for approval. Before then we present to the governor's office, the Endowment Lands Board and our delegation.
I think that's a great idea. At least we have some kind of general input into where the state land goes. But my concern right now is what DF is going to do with their ground. Because if they sell that to the Forest Service, to the state, that comes off our tax rolls. And that raises everybody else's taxes when that happens. And that's my big concern. I don't know, I think the last time I looked, it was a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty thousand or so revenue from DF Development Timber Ground that we would lose if they sell it to the state or the feds, so. Maybe that could be part of this discussion as well. I don't know if you want to do that, but that could be a real strike against us at the county level.
So how much revenue did you say we had?
I don't know. It was, it was been four or five years ago, and I I'd have to get in and look. Sue would have that information now. How much taxes DF actually pays every year into our budget, and it's a lot. I just hope it doesn't go to Forest Service or state.
I don't.
Hope it stays private.
I don't think, I haven't heard any rumors about it going to state or federal.
Or by, I don't think.
State should have bought it the first go-around anyhow. That's neither here nor there.
Or the county.
Well, and now maybe specific areas, you know, we could identify specific areas and help give that feedback. I'm just concerned, because the Forest Service already owns eighty-nine percent. And if the IDL ground goes and is traded to grounds outside of Valley County, that means now the feds are going to own ninety-two percent of Valley County, and it just, I think that there could be other conversations and a full recommended plan as we move forward. Thank you, Cindy, for sitting on that with us.
Anything else?
Can't think of anything. I guess you're doing the Gold Fork Shop Thursday night in P and Z.
If we get to it.
I hope you can, because we're waiting for that decision to move forward, so.
I asked Jeff, two guys, to make sure that Jeremy's included in any of the plans, so that he can make sure that the building is properly wired for broadband. Jeff says he'll keep him in the loop. The plans are not that far along yet.
Yeah, we kind of pushed that one on, trying to get to it.
Good, good. I appreciate that. Thanks. Mr. Laxson.
Sir.
Good morning.
Ma'am, sir, sir.
You call him Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller.
Resident.
Professor.
Gets his official title.
So I I did Zoom with the BFC on last Thursday, and the conversation came up. I asked a question on MOG, mature and old growth timber, if it was going to affect plans that we've, existing plans, and they said they hadn't analyzed it yet. But I also listened to the Targi meeting the other day, and they are putting off forest planning now for two to three years because of MOG. So I would expect that to come through to the Boise and the Paet, just slowing everything down.
I sat through a NACO meeting on Friday that I was going to talk to you about, but these are amendments. It cannot change the existing forest plan. And so these are amendments too. And there was quite the controversy, because the Forest Service was there and asked NACO to represent all counties in this conversation. And we flat said no. There are way too many counties in this country that have a voice in this conversation. And that NACO will not be our central representative. And so there's going to be a group created to work with NACO to find NACO's place in the conversation. But the Forest Service is not going to just abdicate the responsibilities and choose one organizations to represent all of us. So our voices will be heard.
Yeah, I think, I I think there, personally, the concern that we need to have right now is that I, I, it's just like the Sage End Project. They've decided to pull all the recreation out of it, so they can push it through faster, because if there's recreation, there'll be a lot more challenges on it. I think it's just going to slow everything way down, whether it be MOG or Wolverine or Grizzly Bear. It's just all our projects to take care of our forests, the diseased trees, the dying trees, or it's all going to get slowed way down. That's too bad.
Well, it is. It's frustrating. So they had a meeting on, because I got a memo that they weren't having it this month, PFC.
The PFC is not having it. That was the Boise Forest Coalition that I was talking about. Yeah, and I I actually was a little disappointed the PFC wasn't going to meet. I sent an email back a little blunt about kicking the can down the road does never solves anything, but that's what the decision was made to kick the can down the road for another month.
Did the BFC talk about the burnt log road?
No. No.
That was approved supposedly.
Yeah, I saw that. I was pleasantly, yeah. Yeah. So, let's get to the fun stuff.
I thought that was the fun stuff, Larry.
That, I I enjoy, I enjoy working on the land issues, absolutely, but I'll tell you what, there are things that this county does that just always amazes me. It shows. Sometimes you kind of look for the heart of the county. Well, the heart of the county came out on Saturday. We had our, I think it was our twelfth annual. We had our, I think it was our twelfth annual Disabled Veterans Snowmobile Ride. And normally we have anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty people there. It's, you know, you try to have three volunteers with each veteran, so it takes a lot of people. We had fifty disabled veterans. And these guys, you know, with their metal legs and metal arms and all the other things that go with them. It was, it was incredible. It really was. And God blessed us for sure because you guys saw the weather. We actually had snow on the road. We'd have a melting issue. Trails held up fine. Some of them went all the way into Warren. It was, you know, the smiles on their faces when they came back was just absolutely outstanding. The people, I spent a lot of time during the day talking to our guests that are coming in from other states who had to park way down the road. And they were all, hey, it's fine. Everything's great. It worked well. I was really impressed. The sheriffs did a really good job of talking to people and working with them out there. My gosh, less Valley County for their heart because it was a wonderful thing.
I've been a part of that before. I've been a part of that.
Yes.
For helping those people and snowmobiling with them and.
And we're getting to the point now where I think we're going to have to put out our next year. Our goal next year is to expand our parking, of course. And we'll be talking about that and probably in the next couple of weeks. I think we're going to get approval for the expansion. I'm not asking, going to ask for any money. I'm just, we're just going to talk about the plans for the expansion. And we're also going to start talking about expanding the Francie Wallace Groomer Shed too.
Well, also.
We're just running out of room. But it just, anyway, something to be happy about. They just did a fantastic job. We had people from three different states come in to help us, which is pretty cool too. So you guys have any questions for me?
So Larry, have you thought about expanding to other areas with this vet ride?
It's kind of difficult because even though the McCall Club sponsors it, it is a VA. It's, the VA actually puts it on and they bring all these guys out as a group. They keep them together as much as possible. They feed them, do some awards, give T-shirts out.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, and, and it's the best place for it. I would rather not be in an area where we can get people off trail very often. And when you're on Warren wagon, you're pretty much on Warren wagon. Kind of keeps things under control.
Yeah, yeah. But I think in the future, you're going to have to look at splitting it up.
Oh, boy.
Move them around. Because every year it's more and more.
Yeah, he's, right now, the limit is fifty. He won't take any more. So we'll see. And it's those guys that make that decision.
And who's the group that does it?
It's the veterans, it comes out of the Veterans Hospital. It's, oh my gosh, I can't believe, I can't remember his name.
We had a friend that came and helped and he said it was just fabulous.
Yeah, just, it's just a phenomenal thing. It just, you know, you feel, you walk away with, it's not like, well, I just did a good job or anything like. Actually walk away with your heart feeling good, knowing you did something for somebody else. And that's just a wonderful thing.
Good.
And you guys are part of that.
Yep, good, good, good. It's a lot of fun.
Yep.
Um, you're going to be, oh, let's see, never mind, not you. Never mind. I was going to, I was thinking about the county shops, but you're not Jeff.
No, not today.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you much, Larry.
Okay, last one on the line. Mara, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So it's been a busy couple of weeks. We're still working on the new GNA agreement. I met with Brian Davis last week. So I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, that should be coming to you guys again, some different wording and changing of the budget, really. So not some massive things, but that will need to be, it's still being draft form, so you guys will have to review it as well as legal as well. We also have the draft of the MOU for East McCall. I just submitted the budget on Friday for that, so that will be coming in. Mackenzie will review it and then we'll, she'll send it off to legal as well. So that should be in the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping, that we'll be able to.
How many acres did you end up with there?
How many what?
Acres?
Um, as of right now, just eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, good.
Yep, for that one.
Pretty good.
So, because before we used to do thirty-five thousand for project management. And we're doing about the same. It's just split up a little bit different. So it's always kind of been around eighty-eight acres that Stephanie has accomplished.
Do you have kind of a, oh, I guess it'd be like a set program that, you know, it's X amount per acre that you work off of? Or how do you figure out your, your budget on something like that?
And so that's the bidding process. So we'll get bids from contractors. And it's based off of what they're bidding. And typically, it's been running between fifteen hundred and twenty-two hundred. So it kind of just depends on the year.
Depends on the.
Fuel, all the things, right? So, and then what I've noticed over the years, that the last two, it's been right around two grand. So high twenty-five, but right in there. So before, it used to be a lot less. And then in other places of the state, like Bonners County, it's a lot less just because they don't have such a tree density like we do here. And then their parcels are a little bit bigger. So it's harder when we have smaller parcels, more houses.
The dense trees, yeah.
More dense trees, more liability really for those contractors to be able to fall trees close to houses and stuff like that, so.
I think they've all had to upgrade their equipment in order to meet our needs, so. That equipment's kind of expensive.
And economy, right? So just cost of living of everything. So, yeah, we'll have the East McCall coming up and we'll get that reviewed and hopefully submitted. Hopefully, we'll have that done by middle of May, so then I can start reaching out to landowners around June. So some other really cool things is we're starting to get a lot of the Firewise Grant applicants in. So typically, every year we get around thirty to forty. And we've already met about twenty right now, so we still have another month. So the word is definitely getting out there. And then I had Mackenzie put it on Facebook. And so there's been quite a few people that have viewed that and stuff and have been reaching out to me and Stephanie. Last Friday alone, I had like seven or eight emails. So in just one day of it being on Facebook.
And it was in the Star News last week too?
Yep. And so Stephanie posts it every week in Star News up until it's due. So it still has another month to do that.
And most of those are the five hundred dollars ones.
Yep. So there's other small Firewise Grants that the Valley County provides. It's between five hundred and twenty-five hundred. And then we do do some larger ones for like HOAs, but that's a big community base, right? So you gain twelve landowners instead of just parceling it out for one landowner. So you're getting them coming together, using the HOA to fund it that way. So that's the easiest and best way to get larger product done. So the more we can get of those HOAs is better. So instead of it just being one person doing work, you're now getting a wide variety of people doing work and a bigger landscape and just these little pieces here and there. Right? Because that's the goal ultimately, is to have a continuous fuel break, really.
I think what they're dealing with, with the insurance, and insurance is really watching fire stuff. And I think it's getting people's attention. We better start doing this or insurance rates will just go up.
Or drop.
Or they drop. Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's definitely a huge thing. So it's definitely becoming a lot more popular than it used to be in the past.
Yep.
I'm wondering if at some moment, though, we're not going to have to put a cap, you know, spend so much because those Title III funds is how we're doing these. So we need to be able to make sure that we're identifying our budget within that Title III and how much we can spend on these.
I think Stephanie said she allocates typically around forty to fifty thousand a year. So she's been doing it for three, four years now. And that's what we've kind of stuck around for the last handful of years.
Because Title III, if it goes away, we, this goes away.
I know. That's why I'm, you know, and there's a lot of things that we need to do out of those Title III, so.
Yeah, and a lot of people are seeing it now. So I definitely get, I mean, I wasn't even in this job yet and I got people asking about it last fall. So, I mean, it's definitely starting to be a community-wide thing, kind of like the Woody debris bins. People are really catching on to things and are really liking it.
You know, I wonder, do the cities get Title III?
No.
Much too bad the cities can't step up a little bit and help.
And I'm just wondering if there's another funding mechanism that we can use at all. If the RAC ever gets approved, but that comes out of Title III also. So I mean, that's the Title III, if we don't get Title III, we don't get RAC, we don't get a lot of things. So we might want to think about looking for any other type of grant that we could fund some of this stuff with. Just unsure about Title III.
Yeah, because we won't know again until next year, right? So.
Hopefully, we'll know by the end of this year. They're supposed to be passing a budget again, but it's which budget mechanism can we put this into?
Pretty close to that.
Pretty close to that. So we should, processes like this could be self-sustaining.
Yeah.
That would be sweet.
And so one thing that Stephanie does do is there's a match. So the landowner does have to spend five hundred to receive five hundred. So she has kind of established that within the community that there is some expectation of you upcoming with some money to receive some money.
Mara, do you know how our project's going on over on the west side from the contractor? We heard from council last year, I think she was.
Well, as of right now, I heard there's no progress on it just because of the snow. So I think she'll.
But she's still going to come and do that?
Yes, she's going to finish it. Yep, she's still under contract as far as I know. And she'll be finishing that this year. And then Stephanie did move the rest of the project acres up to Bear Basin area because she has a lot of landowners that have been super interested up there. And like I said, the biggest thing with these kind of projects is you kind of want a continuous landscape. Hard to do, right? Because you might get one landowner to agree and the next one not to. But if you can start getting that, then that's what creates your fuel breaks and your free loading to go down. Um, I do have two MOS presentations coming up this next month. I have one on March eighteenth. Um, that will be a field day, so I'll be going out and actually showing them some of these Firewise projects that we've been doing. So one of the big areas that has a lot of potential and proving of good work is Lux Point. And so we have some landowners that have done a lot of work and then some that have not. So they can see the difference of what it looks like to be Firewise and where your landowner might not be right next to them. Basically, to get that word out to everyone needs to do their own work and. So, and then I have another one on April first. And then I've been working with Tamara to work on the website. Um, one of the biggest things is getting that portal out there so that landowners can reach us to go out there and do like a home evaluation for these grants so that I can know where a lot of homeowners are interested and if they're interested in Firewise. So that's one cool thing that I've actually talked to Cara too, the GIS, is we can hook it up to, it's called Survey One, Two, Three. Where if they submit this application, it also sends it with their parcel number and a map. So we know exactly where their land, their home is. And so that's actually going to be really cool to be able to see if you have a majority of people in this area wanting a grant or to be Firewise. And then we're also discussing doing an open house in May up at the Lake Fork office, basically to introduce my position. Have people come, landowners come, meet me, meet Stephanie, talk about past grants, talk about Firewise grants. Have a Woody debris bin out there so that they can also dispose of some things. But I think that's a really good idea just to show the transition from her to me. Because she knows a lot of people out there and having an open house where they can ask me questions and where I see the future going, I think is a great idea. We haven't set an actual date for that because that is wildfire preparedness month. So I have a lot of things on weekends, so we're kind of thinking about maybe on a Thursday or Friday doing that. So if one of you guys would like to be there.
Yep, just send us the invite or the date, the name from.
So if there's a date you guys have in particular, one of those, just let me know too. So.
You just have to set it with us, Mara.
I'll send out a couple of dates.
If we, if, yeah, if we can get it on our calendars in enough time, then we don't fill it up with other things.
Yeah, have you gotten all the infrastructure stuff you need over at the?
Yes, yeah, I'm getting it.
Big Fork Shop?
Yep. Yes, it's a nice facility, so it's very quiet.
And they, Jeremy was just in here, what do you say about the wifi?
I'll have it in by Friday.
Okay, perfect, yeah. And then I'm going to be helping assist with the Wildfire Preparedness Day on May fourth. So the Forest Service always puts it on down here at the Cascade Fire Station. And they have a ton of booths and a Woody debris bin out there and all that kind of stuff. So I'm going to help assist her with the booth and, like I said, get my name out there so people start knowing. One of my big focuses on the upcoming years is trying to get some, some of the grants down here in Cascade. Because we've always seen a lot up in McCall. Um, so I'm just trying to focus some of my attention to a different demographic too.
I really appreciate that. I think the limiting factor in the past is, and that we weren't close enough to Forest Service ground.
Yep.
And I think with the new rules now that people don't understand that, so need to get that back out there.
Up by Clear Creek, I mean, there's, I, I can't figure out why that summer drive hasn't burned yet.
I know.
There's so much dead stuff in there. Oh, my gosh.
You can't even walk through that stuff back there.
It's bad.
It's really deep.
And they do have some GNA down around Valley, so in the upcoming years. So that's why I'm kind of focusing down here too, is to be able to start meeting landowners so I can kind of decide or find an area that a lot of people are interested in. So I can apply for a grant in the future. So my goal is next January to apply for somewhere down here.
Good. Awesome.
And those, that's it.
Okay.
If you guys have any questions. Good. Well, thank you, guys.
We're good. Thank you. Have a great day. So our next agenda item is not till eleven, so we're going to take a break and we'll see everybody back here at eleven.
We've got an hour and a half.